We will call the Stevens Point area Public School District Board meeting to order for Monday, August 10, 2015, 6:30 PM. And Amy, could you please call the roll and verification of quorum?
Ms. Baker?
Here.
Mr. Ebel?
Here.
Ms. Earler?
Here.
Ms. Vaxton?
Is excused.
Mr. Levin?
Here.
Ms. Ranno?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Shirk?
Here.
Ms. Totten?
Here.
Eight members present, we have a quorum.
Item three, approval of the agenda.
Move for approval as printed.
I'll second.
Any discussion or changes?
I just would like for eight B to be pulled out separately.
Eight B to be pulled out separately, okay.
And that's our policy to be allowed to do that. So I'm not sure I even need to bring it up or not.
Okay, so let's take a roll call vote with eight B pulled out separately.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Ms. Not here. Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Ms. Ranno?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shirk?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Item four is the Pledge of Allegiance.
It appears as though our pledge children are not here at this point in time, so we'll just go ahead and do it, and if they go up, we can maybe do it again.
Do it again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to item five, A, Community Service Recognition Award. We, I don't believe that we have community service, but we have staff.
That's right, we have Bs.
Okay, so we'll move into B, which is Student, Staff, Parent, Community Recognition. And I will turn it over to our superintendent.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. A successful summer school program requires a lot of long-range planning, effective communication, and efficient procedures. By all indication, this year's summer session for the school district was a huge success. Before we recognize the people responsible for this achievement, here are some data that you may find interesting. Two thousand nine hundred and twenty-four students participated, with 1,056 at the elementary sites of Madison, Jefferson, and McKinley; 491 students at Ben Franklin; 247 students at Spash; and 103 in online courses. The Panther Fitness at Spash also had 282 students; music lessons and camps had 232; swimming lessons had 855; Youth and College Partnership with UWSP had 253. The total number of courses taken during summer school was 4,754, with a staff of 249. So congratulations to the following employees for making summer school a success, and we'll wait till we get all, everybody in one group, because I want to do the food service people also. The district operates food service program designed to provide nutritious meals to students and community members up to the age of 21. This year's sites included Madison, McKinley, Jefferson, Ben Franklin, and Spash. To give you an idea of the phenomenal growth of this program, in the pilot year of 2012, 9,452 breakfasts and lunches were served. Nine thousand four fifty-two. This past year, 44,161 meals were served, so that's a 367 percent increase in the last four years. So I would like to, I think at this time, call up, first we'll do the food service folks, and as I call your name, and I see you all standing there in the back, would you please just step forward? We'll give you your certificates, and then we'll turn around and have a group picture. So here they are. And maybe I should just go out there now.
Laurie Epstein is the Summer School Food Service Manager.
So here comes Laurie. Mary Lutz, Summer School Head Server at Jefferson. Lynn Lickman, Summer School Head Server at Madison. Sandy Rozek, Summer School Server at McKinley. Did I say her name right? Brenda Varga, the Summer School Cashier at Spash. I don't see Brenda tonight. Paula West, Summer School Food Service Supervisor. Stephanie Danielski is not here tonight. Certificate for Stephanie. Jennifer Pillman. Nicole Samansky. Ah, here comes Nicole. And that looks like that is the last of the people that are here tonight. So I'm going to say the other names real quick, so everybody out in the television land here is Laurie Varger, Janine Pavelski, Deb Wierachowski. Am I doing okay with that one? Yeah, okay. Laura Force and Kelly Ostray. So congratulations to all of these ladies. Good job.
So come on up around, we'll get a picture of everybody. Me and I can go on the outside. You guys see the important people.
Okay. Dr. Owens in the background trying to make you smile.
And the board, the board usually wants to give their personal thanks, so if you could just start with Stan and look your way around, so thank you.
Thank you again.
You're welcome.
You did an amazing job.
Thank you.
Amazing, you guys. Laurie, amazing. You guys are doing awesome.
Thank you so much.
What a awesome program.
Thank you very much.
All the board. I barely can make one of y'all.
Thank you.
You guys are great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It's really important. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. You guys do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming tonight. Thank you for the summer.
Thank you.
Your work this summer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we'll ask the summer school administrators to come up. Let's start with Trina Lumens. Trina was the Ben Franklin Summer School Principal. Steve Strassmann. Steve here, there he is. Steve Strassmann, Jefferson Summer School Principal.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Steve Prokop, Secondary Summer School Coordinator. Steve, thank you. Julie Clark is not here. She was the Summer School Coordinator and Madison Summer School Principal. And I don't see Cynthia Solinsky from McKinley Summer School. Mike Chefcheck, Spash Summer School Principal. Right? Chefcheck. Just the way it's spelled. Mike?
Thank you.
Okay. Let's give them a little hand. Crowd around each other. And if you want to go around and shake hands with the board.
Thanks so much. You guys did an awesome job, really, taking care of those kids in the summer.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Keeps this one out of trouble.
I have a question for you. Your brother Dave.
No. Good job.
Thank you very much. Thank you for giving up your summer for us. Thank you very much. Thank you for giving up your summer for us.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And we also, of course, want to thank the, all of the summer school secretaries, not only at summer school, but throughout the year, because they provide such incredible support, and without them, I know these folks in the back, they're nodding their heads, couldn't do their job that well. So thanks to all the summer school secretaries.
Okay, moving on to five C. Are there any donations?
Do not know of any donations unless Tom does.
Okay, so we'll move into item six, which is public comments. We have one individual, Albert Rakow, who signed up this evening. Is there anyone else here who slipped in later who wanted to speak to the board? Okay, then Albert.
I'm Albert Rakow, 1824 Gilke Street, Stevens Point. I welcome interim Superintendent Lee Bush to the community. I read the 10 goals the school board has developed for the coming school year. You board members held a retreat with interim superintendent at which you went over the goals. The press reports that both board and interim superintendent Bush expressed optimism that these goals can be achieved in the year. When the board organized itself after the April elections, you retained the committee system that was instituted in the previous year. That system seems to be working in that the length of board meetings has been shortened. A great many board policies have been updated or revised without nearly as much lengthy discussion at the board meetings themselves as last year. That seems to indicate that committees also work. The district should be able to move forward in the coming year on a number of items that have been previously put on the back burner. This should be a good year. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board.
Thank you, Albert. Okay, we will move on to item seven, which is presentations and/or board comments. We can probably delete the and/or board comments for future agendas. I guess I just saw that. A, our student representative is not here this evening. She's got her final, pretty beautiful summer night before she has to show up for school and us in September. Item B is WASB, and that would be a legislative update, but Angel is also up north, cooking for Fort Wilderness, so she is not able to be here with us this evening. Item C is our superintendent's report, so I'll turn that over to Lee.
And I am able to be here with you tonight.
Good.
First off, I'd like to thank the board, the staff, and the community for the warm welcome that has been given to me. I truly appreciate these genuine expressions and the confidence that you've shown in me. I'm excited about this school year and the promise it holds, and look forward to working with all of the staff, the community, and most importantly, the students. This is a friendly, beautiful town, and from the conversations I've had with community members, education truly is the number one priority here. During my first few weeks, I've had these conversations with elected officials, including Mayor Mike Wiesa, County Executive Patty Dreyer, Plover Village President Tom Davies, and City Manager Dan Mahoney, Sheriff Mike Lucas, and interim Police Chief Martin Skiba. I've also met with civic organization directors of the United Way, Boys and Girls Club, YMCA, and the CW Community Foundation, business leaders from Sentry, Skyward, and higher education leaders, including Chancellor Patterson from UWSP. Everyone speaks highly of the school district and is proud of our partnerships and common programs. At the retreat with the board in July, the number one priority goal for me this year is to build better bridges of communication between the district and all of our community stakeholders, within the district, between the administration and all staff groups, and between the superintendent and the board. What a great opportunity for us to create a unified voice behind this high-performing school system. The retreat also produced several documents in which this board set forth a code of operating principles, protocol for meetings, and ethical standards that will set the tone for this year and beyond. The cabinet and the leadership team are also firmly behind these operating principles as well. So we're off and running. I would like to formally invite the board to the back-to-school celebration on August 27 at 8 o'clock at Spash Fieldhouse. Several of our area leaders have indicated they will attend, and the event will be an awesome kickoff to the school year. The theme is "Where the Dreams of Life Begin," and the district motto of "Prepare Each Student to Be Successful" means creating the educational environment where every student can begin to realize their life's dreams. So please plan to join us. Thank you.
Do any board members have any questions for Lee?
I have one. It's a little question. The theme, "Where the Dreams of Life Begin,"
Yes.
I love that.
You love that?
I do, and I just wanted to know, is that a creation of the cabinet and yourself?
I actually used that theme in 1990 at Lake Park Elementary School in Naples, Florida.
Oh, my goodness.
And I re, I re, yeah, I brought it back. Because it just seemed appropriate.
I think it is.
It's a nice thing. That's what we really need to do, is uplift children, and we're making their dreams come true, so.
I think it's absolutely accurate.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we will move on to item eight, which is the consent agenda. And Lisa's asked B to be pulled out separate, so why don't we go ahead and do that one first, and then we'll do the other two together. So item B is the minutes from July 20, 2015, board retreat. But I have a motion and a second, and then we can have discussion.
I'll move to approve.
Okay, discussion. Anybody have any comments or questions? Okay. Amy, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Ms. Ranno?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shirk?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Abstained.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero with one abstention.
And then we will, I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes from July 13, 2015, first regular July board meeting, and approval of the scheduled monthly bills. Vote on those together.
Move to approve.
Any discussion or questions? Okay, Amy, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Levin?
Yes.
Ms. Ranno?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shirk?
Yeah.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Moving on to item nine, which is information and/or action items. First is A, Business Services. Number one, Business Services Committee Chair Report. Chris Baker.
We had a very productive meeting. It was probably more informative than anything else last week. We did talk to EO Johnson, who I see is here tonight, and had some brief conversations with them about managed print and the program that they're going to be bringing to the RFP that the district approved, that the board approved last time, and then the RFP and proposed contract. And we did move it forward to propose that the board approve it as is approved, or as is presented in our packet tonight. Other than that, boy, I'm sorry, that was sort of the biggest part of our meeting. I'm trying to think if there was anything else. Tom's not in here. I don't see him.
He's hiding in the back.
Yeah, am I missing anything?
We just talked about special ed changes.
Oh, that's right. Thank you. That's what I forgot. We did talk about some of the changes in the budget to the special ed program, and how that may affect our special ed program. And the long and short of it is, I think the biggest takeaway that I had was that the pieces of the budget are coming in slowly, and as they come in, Dr. Owens will continue to present those to us. The first piece of the budget that has sort of been coming in, the state budget is what I'm referring to, the first piece that came in were changes to the special ed budget, and they're not significant, but they are different. For example, there will be a $12,000 cap on what we can receive for regular special ed kids coming into the district. But my first thought was alarm that maybe that's not enough money, but as Dr. Owens pointed out in the meeting, is that that's a pretty normal amount of money that we would be looking for for a special ed child. And actually, it makes budgeting and future budgeting a little bit easier, because there's an exact amount, as opposed to every child having something different. So it was all information-only, very helpful, kind of a good overview, and I expect that we'll be hearing more pieces about the budget as they become available to our cabinet members.
I guess I'd point out, and Tom, correct me if I'm misstate, but the other portion of it is that the state has decreased the percentage share that they will support. However, as Tom pointed out, current funding is already inadequate, so we haven't been getting full payment on the higher share. So at least with the level of state funding that's occurring, we're likely to not see any change. We'll be underfunded. It could be something that would affect us in future if the funding expanded, because then we would be looking at a smaller share. Is that? Oh, right. Okay. Okay, moving on to item A2, which is the EO Johnson Print Management Agreement.
I would make the motion to approve the EO Johnson Agreement effective January 1, 2017, as presented in the packet.
Do I have a second? Second from Chris Scott. Any discussion or questions?
Just a comment. A thank you to EO Johnson for all the work that you did, coming back a number of times, giving us a lot of information, a lot of explanation, and also coming forward to the cost will be a lot less, but also looking at all of the usage. That's really complex in schools and that, so it's very appreciated, and thanks again for coming back.
I guess if I could just add on top of that, I think I'm the one that caused you guys to have to put together an RFP, and I appreciate that. I think that the competitive process, when we're talking about taxpayer dollars, is of utmost importance, and that we need to be responsible with that. And you guys came through with an RFP that was about this thick. And that was very much appreciated, that you did that, and good for our taxpayers.
Jim?
And it's not for EO Johnson, I'm not quite sure who to direct this to, but I know, working in the university, and I know there was a big problem with our print, or our color prints this year. We kept going overboard and overboard. I would suggest that our, I don't know if it would be Tom or whoever it would be, is make sure that all of our computers default to black. I mean, at the university, it was a big thing, where some of them were not default. Look, I see him smiling over there. Thank you. See, I'm not that far behind.
Yeah, and Ms. Toden brought that up at the business meeting. And so I talked to Matt about it the next day, and we made a definite note of that. We do have to talk with Dr. Casey about making sure that the applications support that, but we'll do everything in our power to make sure that drive and prints to black and white.
And make sure everybody knows that, even though there's one sheet that's color, if you print that color button, if you're printing black and white, it's still underneath the color number or percentage-wise. And so what I have to do at my job is I pull out that color one, and I print that one singly, and then do the other ones myself. So if the whole organization here knows, all of our staff knows, hopefully we won't hit that where we got to color in with our Crayolas, you know, at the end of the year. So, but thank you. Sorry, you're already, we're one step ahead of me, believe it or not. Thank you.
Well, Amy did point out tonight that she finally got permission to print the several board members in color that have been in black and white.
It was a one-time authorization.
Since the most recent election, so we're up and running.
Can I just add on the color thing, though? There have been, because I've been going to the technology committee meetings, and there have been a number of teachers that have come forward and really been upset about not being able to print color all the time. And they are, like the kids that are taking technical classes at Ben and PJ's, and some of the special ed kids. And so, yeah, we do need to have a de-set for black, or, I'm sorry, default set for black and white. That's absolutely essential. But we, as a board, need to understand that there are a number of situations where color is absolutely the priority, I guess, in those particular situations. And I don't want any of the teachers that might be watching thinking that we're not going to be authorizing or frowning upon use of color, because there are cases where they, like in particular in the special ed kids, they need to have color prints, because that's what they're learning by color. And so just as a follow-up on the color comment.
Well, I think it's the benefit, again, of a print management system. I mean, it's a much broader job and support that EO Johnson has been providing for us. And I know that superintendent and cabinet and leadership have been working to really be able to create that environment within the buildings, to allow for the buildings to have some latitude, as well as potential cost savings in managing their buildings in support of student success, you know, and as students need them, and being mindful of which components need more and which components maybe can do with less, so. Okay, I think we can call the roll.
Ms. Ranno?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shirk?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Item A3 is the revision of the 2014-2015 budget, and I'm going to look to Lee and Tom to provide us with just a little bit of background on this.
Excuse me, Madam President, I need to accuse myself.
Okay.
Okay, defer to me. Basically, what the main changes that have occurred is gifts and federal and state grants that last October we didn't even know about. So that's why, if you notice, on the second page of the backside of the memo, items that changed in the revenues, local sources are gifts that were received in Fontaine, and the other ones are in state and federal sources, which are grants. And the offset is the expenses that go along with them.
Okay, great. Does anybody have any questions, Bill, while he's up here? Would I have a motion to approve the amended 2014-15 budget as presented? So move.
Second.
Any questions? Amy, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shirk?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Ms. Ranno?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Item nine, B1, is Educational Services Committee Chair Report. Chris Scott?
Thank you. The Educational Services Committee met on August 4 with all committee members present. We had four informational items on our agenda, a report on seclusion and restraint, home internet access, update technology changes, and professional development and curriculum. On the item of restraint and seclusion, this is a yearly report that needs to be given to the board. All of the information is detailed in a report, and all of the incidents are documented, given to not only the principal at the school, but also to parents. This past year, the incidents in restraints have dropped about 59 percent from last year, which is really, really amazing, and also 29 percent on the seclusion. These two items are really used as a last resort to really keep staff and students safe in the schools and that, and I give a lot of credit to our staff, working with these students. The second item was the home internet access. For a couple years, there have been students who have a laptop but don't have internet access at home. And Dr. Casey has been looking at different ideas and getting information, looking for a way that we would be able to serve the students, and he came upon something, obtaining a device. We have about 150 students this year that won't be able to have internet access, but they would be able to get that internet access with this device. Because of the Sentry Technology Initiative, it'll pay for those devices. But access for those students will be looked at by specific criteria. One of the things will be, is there a financial need in the home? The home doesn't have internet, and the student may not have any kind of history of computer violations and that. There's other criteria also with that. Brian also gave an update on many of the current and upcoming technology improvements that are going to be in our schools. One of it is Wi-Fi in all our schools, which is amazing. The change from Outlook to Gmail, which we're all having a really good time with, it's been great. And I have to say, I really actually like it a lot. He also gave us an update on some of the training for our staff that's being done at the PDC, and I really, it's amazing how much work is being done during the school year, but also during the summer, to get us prepared for this next school year. So I'd like to thank Brian with all of his staff. They've done a great job. The last item on our agenda was the professional development and curriculum. Keel Aronson and Dave Lockett gave an update on what assessments and testing for students in all grade levels are taking place throughout the year. The matrix is amazing. As people probably know, the Badger 38 did not come to pass, and the state still hadn't given us what kind of test they're going to use. But with the presentation that they gave, and looking at all of the assessments and the testing that our teachers are doing, this is something that's really, to the teachers, more important than the state test that's coming through, because this is where they really work with students, to find out how the students are doing. So they'll be giving us more information on the curriculum. One other item, just real quick, a standing item on our committee- One other item, just real quick, a standing item on our committee is celebrating students and staff, and I brought up, this is just so amazing to me, it just gave me goosebumps, that we have teachers, Paula Bartel at Jefferson Elementary, and they have tri-wheeled bikes, which have baskets of books, and they take books all around the neighborhood to make sure that kids who want books for the summer will get those books. They do different neighborhoods, they talk to parents to see where there are needs and where students will need that. So I just want to give a lot of kudos to Jefferson Elementary School. They've been doing this for a number of years. Paula started at a different elementary, but just, these kind of things happen all the time in our schools, and throughout the year, even when school is not in session. So kudos to them. It's just a great celebration of what our staff does. That's it.
Do you have any questions about those reports at all? Yes, I have one. All the way back to your very first thing that you mentioned about the...
Seclusion and restraint?
Yeah, restraining children. You said that the incidents have dropped 59% since last year.
About 59%.
Does staff have any idea, any speculation as to why they've dropped?
You know...
Are they changing their protocol?
It's something that they keep, you know, it's something they keep track of, but I don't, there was, I did ask that question, and I don't know. I guess, Greg, I don't know if you'd like to elaborate on that, as not being an educator. I just, I think there are probably a lot of different reasons.
Good evening, and just a minor correction. Incidents of seclusion dropped 53%, incidents of restraint dropped 29%. This is the third year that we have been under Wisconsin Act 125, which requires us to report on or before September 1st to the board the number of occurrences during the prior school year. And as I explained during our Ed Services Committee meeting, we're still in the trend-setting years. So our first year of data was what it was. The second year, we did realize an increase, and after we saw that increase, we made some very specific goals for ourselves at our respective buildings, to decrease the number of incidents. So it's nothing that we can attribute to specific intervention or initiative, but rather just getting everybody on the same page, as far as regarding that as the absolute last resort when it comes to students who are exhibiting behavior that's out of control.
Great, thank you. Once again, proving information is power. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Lisa has a question.
Greg, instead of the percentages, could you actually give me the numbers?
I could, if you want me to run back to my office.
I have that report, would that help?
That would be great, they're on that sheet.
On this one?
Yep, if I may.
You may. Sorry about the 59.
So our number of seclusion incidents was 209, and the number of restraint incidences was 255.
Thank you.
And it's also important to know that the number of students that utilized seclusion was only two for the district, and I don't have the other number with me, it's right around 53 students that utilized restraint.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, then we'll move on to item B2, which is Student Academic Standards Notification.
You received a memo in your packet, but I'll be going over that just real briefly. In the 2015-2017 state budget, 2015 Wisconsin Act 55 imposes a number of additional notice requirements on school districts. So we have a requirement that districts provide parents and guardians with notifications about the academic standards that are adopted by the school board for that particular year. The Budget Act specifically requires that school boards must annually include an agenda item for the first school board meeting of the year that clearly identifies the academic standards adopted by the board that will be in effect for that school year. But since this change became effective July 14th, this is the first board meeting that we could do that act. So we have made a statement of standards that we would like for you to formally approve, and it says, "The Stevens Point area public school district has adopted the Wisconsin Model Academic Standards as the basis for all K-12 curriculums. Embedded in those standards are two fundamental principles: one, Wisconsin's Guiding Principles for Teaching and Learning inform the design and implementation of all the academic standards; and two, the Common Core State Standards, which are derived from the more rigorous National Assessment of Educational Progress, national standards, which drive our math, English Language Arts, and literacy. The Guiding Principles for Teaching and Learning and the CCSS, the Common Core State Standards, emerge from research and provide the touchstone for practices that affect the vision of every child, graduate, and well-prepared for college and career. When implemented through rigorous curriculum and teacher practices, these principles inform what happens in the classroom, the implementation and evaluation of programs, and remind us of our own beliefs and expectations for students." So we are asking that we have a motion to approve these academic standards.
Move to approve the academic standards for 2015-2016 school year.
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
I have a question. Where would you look for those Guiding Principles for Teaching and Learning? I know where to look for the Common Core Standards.
I think David has that answer.
Department of Public Instruction website.
Okay.
You can go right onto the website, and it'll be...
Awesome, thanks, Dave.
So Department of Public Instruction website, the...
Would have that.
Public has, did not hear that answer.
WIDEI, it'll come up, and you can go right to those.
WIDEI, and it will...
WI.DPI.
Oh, okay, WIDEPI.
And you can find them there, the academic standards, as well as the other pieces.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, Amy, could you call the roll?
Ms. Shirk?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Ms. Rannow?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
So, nothing on our Student Services or Technology tonight. EHuman Resources, one is the Human Resources Committee Chair Report. Jeff Evil?
Thank you. The Human Resources Committee met on Monday, August 3rd, and there are a number of items on the agenda for information only. There are a couple of them that most of the discussion centered around. The first was the District Employee Exit Summary, which was long awaited. The Human Resources submitted a report that looked at 22 months of data, and 100 and, let's see, what was it, 157 people that had left the district, but we had only received 21 exit interviews from those. So the survey results are going to be hard to get any meaningful data out of, because of the small number that was included in there. Also, looking at 22 months of data, was actually compared to a 12-month national average, so we asked HR to go back and break it out by 12-month increments, so that we could get a more accurate comparison. So they'll be coming back with revisions to the survey that they did, and then we'll present that to the board. In addition to that, the other item that we had considerable discussion on was the Wasbe Conference, and in particular, as it relates to the district pay plan. And there were four of us that attended the Wasbe Conference, and the first session that we went to was about a pay plan in one of the school districts in Wisconsin, I think it was River Falls. And it was very engaging. As a matter of fact, we were rather excited about it, taking down a lot of notes, and then, right after that, we actually met for some time and started brainstorming on how we could utilize some of the information that we had, that we'd learned from the presentation. And so we did have an opportunity to talk to HR and Business Services when we returned here, and we're pretty excited to find out that they were well on their way as well. And a lot of the information that we brought forward was very much coordinated with some of the direction that they were headed. So that was good to see. It looks like we will be picking that up again at the next meeting, and we'll be talking more in-depth about that moving forward. So that was, you know, other than the employment recommendations, that pretty much dominated the conversations.
Does anybody have any questions of Jeff?
So both of those items will be coming back through committee with update information, and I know Lee is looking to pull together a plan of action with respect to creation of a kind of district-wide committee/ subcommittee to start taking a look at how we might move forward as a district with respect to pay plan, however you want to call that. So he's beginning the process, that's one of the goals that we asked him to take a look at, so he's jumping, he's jumped right on it.
It's on my board.
That's right. So, item two, we'll do recommendations for employment. And Florence is here, if anybody has any questions, but could I have a motion to...
Move to approve the personnel recommendations as presented. Sorry, Ms. Payne, do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Okay. You are talking about the revised, when we ended up...
Revised, yes, the revised.
Not the one in our packet.
No, the revised. So does anybody have any questions of Florence, as to anything on the personnel recommendations?
I have one question. Is, I know Jeff Millsna is on the list as a resignation, is he moving to another spot in the district? I know he's worked at a couple of different places in the district.
He's moving out of state.
Thank you.
So he's no longer gonna be teaching with us.
Okay, any other questions of Florence? All right, Amy, could you call the roll?
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Ms. Rannow?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shirk?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, we are moving on to item three, which is Recommendation to Implement Base Wage Increase for the 2013-2014 District SPAEA Collective Bargaining Agreement.
And, Madam President, I need to recuse myself.
Okay, so, I don't know if Lisa has recused herself and moved away from the table. Do I have a motion to implement base wage increase?
This is for the resolution, is that what we're, am I looking at the wrong motion?
No, that's for the resolution.
Resolution, oh, there it is.
It's a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Right, that's what you're looking for, okay. Move to approve the following resolution as presented. I think in the attachment, the attachment is the resolution, so...
I'll second that. Florence, do you want to just provide it, maybe just do a, read through this background for us, just so people are aware?
Sure. For the 2013-14 Collective Bargaining Agreement, we did meet, or begin, meeting with the SPAEA on June 15th of 2015. And during that meeting, Tom gave an overview or presentation of the budget information, which the board approved, for the bargaining committee to share with the union. We did have discussions with them at that meeting. We got back together June 22nd to continue bargaining on the 2013-14 contract year. And at that meeting, the spokesperson for the SPAEA did say that if the offer was firm from the district, as well as from the SPAEA, that they didn't see any need to continue to meet face-to-face and continue bargaining over the numbers. And we came back then to the board, just to confirm, so to speak, that the board's offer was the 1%. The union did confirm that their offer was remaining at the CPI. The emails are also attached, so you can see the discussions that took place via email. And we have agreed that we are at impasse on this, and what you have before you is the recommendation to implement the board's final offer of 1%.
Any discussion or questions? Thank you, Florence.
Thank you.
I will ask Amy to call the roll.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Ms. Rannow?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shirk?
Since I really don't like the impos, but yes, we need to move on, yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Moving on to item F, Policy. One is the Policy and Legislation Committee Chair Report. Angel, she is not here this evening, so we'll forego the report. We'll move into Policy Review and Approval. Item 2A, 100 Series, 142, School Board Legal Counsel and Auditor. Can I have a motion and a second?
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, any discussion or questions?
Well, I would note, I think that there's something missing from the policy as it is, not as we're approving it, but we revised this, I don't know, a year and a half ago, and that date's not on the revision, the list of revisions.
We actually didn't revise it, it was brought to the board, and it failed on a four-to-four vote. So there were no revisions made to it last year. Last year, the same recommendation had come forward to include the president in with the superintendent, but it failed, I mean, it was a tie vote, so...
You went back and looked that up?
Yes. I did, because, well, Sam actually brought this forward as a new board member, because he was aware that the president had in the past contacted the district attorney, and it wasn't in the policy. So he brought forward the requested change, and because I knew we'd looked at it, you know, not that long ago, I went back and looked, and it was a four-four, yeah, failure, so...
I didn't want to hear Trish say anymore about how much money we're spending.
That was one of his main goals.
Yes, sir.
There's nothing wrong with that.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Just other than when this gets retyped, I think some of the spaces need to be fixed.
Yep. Make it look good cosmetically, if that's correct.
Okay, Amy, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Ms. Rannow?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shirk?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Item B, the 300 Series, 1, 342.2, Homebound Instructional Services. Could I have a motion and a second?
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, any discussion or questions?
Amy, hearing none, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Ms. Rannow?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shirk?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Item B2 is 345.4, Promotion and Retention of Students. And this was in front of us very recently, we made some changes, but some additional changes were requested on behalf of administration, so that's why it's in front of us again Does anybody have, did I get a motion?
No.
Okay, could I have a motion and a second?
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, any discussion or questions on the proposed changes?
Hearing none, could you call the roll, Amy?
Ms. Rannow?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shirk?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Item...
Can I just ask a question? And I apologize, I didn't bring this up, but on the 300 Series, the 342 Homebound Instruction Services, how come it's not headed that way? How come it's headed Request for Program Curricular Modification?
Oh, my gosh. Well, we'll have Greg address that.
I mean, it should have been put in the agenda that way, but I'm just like, okay, did we not complete something correctly?
No, it's a good question. It is Request for Program Modification. However, Homebound is one subset under that policy, I think it's number four, I don't have it in front of me, is the specific area that addresses Homebound requests. And the changes that we were recommending were specific to the area of Homebound, thus the reference as Homebound.
Okay.
But you're right, it really is. But you're right, it really is program modification.
It should have been, yeah, it should have been listed as that, titled as that in the agendas, just so...
Yep.
Sorry, I missed that.
Yeah, so we actually were more, for much, we were more specific than we should be. So we'll have to, thanks, thanks for pointing that out. Because that didn't get caught at committee either, so, good for you.
Thank you.
Thank God, I read my packet.
Okay, so we're moving on to 9G, which general is one board evaluation instrument, and...
Do we vote on that last one?
Yep. And I'm going to turn that over to Lee.
Thank you, Madam President. At the School Board Retreat in July, we talked about a board self-evaluation instrument and a process, you know, in order to become a high-impact board, which I know this board is interested in doing, part of it is looking at what the professional organizations say should be done as a school board, and taking a look at that at the beginning of the year, and then also at the end of the year, to see if you've met some goals as well. So we've provided a couple of instruments, and Sam also provided one that we all got here at, at the meeting now, unfortunately didn't get it ahead of time. But one of them is the WASB School Board Meeting Self-Evaluation Tool. And that's actually different than the other one that I provided from the Oregon School Board Association, which really has to do with board standards for governance, a broader domains that you should be looking at. So the WASB was really on how you operate your meetings, how you think those things go. So they're really different. But the one that Sam provided was another matrix that had to do with dimensions of board competency and what it, what it takes to be a successful board. So that also has some really good domains and indicators on, you know, what, what a board should be doing. So I think what we'd like to do, if you would, if it's your pleasure, is to set up a smaller group to take a look at, at these instruments or perhaps others, so that you could have something to go by, and kind of a guiding, guiding principles for the things that you might be needing to look at as far as how to make yourself effective.
Maybe take a little bit of each that works for us and put it all together.
Is the board comfortable with us appointing a few members to take a look through the survey instruments and hopefully bring back then a recommendation at next month's board meeting?
Do you need a motion to appoint a committee, an ad hoc committee, to review?
Yeah.
All right, so I will move that the board appoint an ad hoc committee to review board evaluation instruments and make a recommendation in a month.
Do I have a second? A second, okay. Why don't we go ahead and approve that, and then, then we'll ask for volunteers. Does anybody have any questions or comments on that? Amy, could you call the roll?
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shirk?
Yep.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
So my assumption is that this committee will probably meet at, at least a couple times. I mean, to take a look through it, provide some guidance, and then to meet to finalize. So is, do I have any Judy's interested, Sam? Is anybody else?
I'll volunteer.
Trish?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'll volunteer.
Okay. All right, better stop, because we've got four.
Yes, right.
Unless, unless somebody else, anybody else?
Well, it only depends what time the meetings are, and it's so hard for me to get to a meeting, so...
Okay. Okay, well, why, well, we'll have Chris and Sam and Trish and Judy. And...
Are we going to just keep with the board members, or are we going to have other committee members or somebody else come in and also look at this with us?
I would think board evaluation, I would say first shot. I'd be more comfortable with the board working with Lee. And then, you know, we'll, we'll take it, this, this year, by its very nature, is going to be a short year, because we're starting in the fall, whereas in future, we'll hopefully set a benchmark earlier. So we'll have a very, we'll have a shorter period of time, and we can evaluate and then maybe determine whether it would be helpful to bring in some additional people. Does, do we have consensus then on the people who will be on that? Do we need a formal?
Sure.
Okay, let's take one. Just to make sure. So could I have a motion and a second to appoint those four volunteers?
I will to appoint those four volunteers to this ad hoc committee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Go ahead, Amy.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Ms. Rano?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shirk?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, item 10, our next board meeting will be Monday, September 14, 2015. That'll be our first regular September meeting. Just a heads up for people, we talked about it at committee, committee, but because the committees will be meeting Labor Day week, we are going to have the Monday committees are going to need to meet on Tuesday, and the Tuesday committees are going to need to meet on Wednesday. That's just a one-time thing because of the calendar, and that's how the calendar was set up, because they fall on Labor Day.
How come that wasn't put in here, then? Just so we can go back and look at it.
For the committee meetings?
Yeah. I mean, I think we've always had the committee meetings listed before.
It's on the board calendar that you all approved in the beginning of the year, so...
If, yeah, if we...
I can send out email reminders if you would like.
That's right. I always thought the committees were always put on here for future meeting mornings.
We can do that.
I thought they were just always put on there, but...
And why don't we go ahead, because of this unique, why don't we send out a email to all the committee members to just remind them of that before next month?
We'll do.
Thank you, Amy. All right, moving into item 11, Closed Session, A1985, Parent 1, Parent C.
Before we move to that one, where we have future agenda items, are we going to be pursuing the, looking for a permanent superintendent on one of our...
It's sooner than later. It, it, I guess, my, in my mind, I thought that's something we should bring in September. I did, I wasn't sure what people's schedules were for summer. I want to make sure that the board member, to the extent we can have all of us together to begin moving forward.
That's fine, I just want to make sure we are moving forward.
No, it's, no, it's definitely, it's something that, that we're looking at as of the start of the school year, which is September, and moving forward on that. Yep. Thanks.
And before we go to the next one, I just want to point out, we've done this meeting in one hour.